Clear for call please. Here.
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 Before we approve the agenda, I'd like to add D and just plans to move forward on all control structures. We have Higgins Lake, but you know, Rex give you a sheet of paper, and that's why I created this meeting, and it talks about Halt Lake and Lake St. Helen. So I want to put all the control structure just to cover us.
Sure, and I'd like to add a couple of things.
Yes.
I'll talk a little bit about some of the concerns my constituents have regarding the attorney party, and also a little bit about the legal lake levels as of today, and so I'd like to direct hopefully delegated authority, all that's going on.
Okay, and that would be in the Higgins Lake delegated authority where I have it listed. Any other?
So we're adding the tentative plan?
Yes, that's all this everyone received right here. And that's the main reason I called this meeting, so we can take our time to discuss one through 12. Do you have a motion? Second. On favor, clerk, call room, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Ostrugren? Russo?
Yes. Public comment? Yes, sir. Please come up here, turn the mic on and state your name. Yeah, yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Wayne Rendell. My family's had a cottage on the west side of Higgins Lake for 76 years now. In the last few years, there's been times during the summer when we couldn't enjoy the lake because the water level was such that we couldn't put our family on the pontoon and get it out into deeper water. I just want you to be aware, when you go forward with this, that for some of us, a few inches of water makes a huge difference, and we need to have that so that we can enjoy our lake. To get out into deeper waters, about 300 yards there, that's a long way to put a dock in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Charlene Cornell from Higgins Lake Property Owners Association. Thank you again for listening to me. I just wanted to make sure that you all understand that two of the prominent organizations on Higgins, and I've heard from more than this many email against this, to say nothing of letters and phone calls that we've received in the office. And two, so you heard from HLLC and HLPOA, we'd like to work together with you on this at Higgins Lake to address the dam and what needs to be done. We believe it's a waste of money to have attorneys involved in this until we know what we can do, and we've, you've heard us offered to share the expenses, if not take care of the expenses of repairing the dam. So I implore you to keep this in mind. Hope we can work together rather than have animosity between us.
Thank you. Number six, new business.
You wait, wait, wait. I wanted to speak also. I wasn't aware that it was.
Okay, I'll get to you in a minute.
All right.
My name is Glenn Fowles, and we've been properties owners up here lakefront on the west side for 40 years. And for many years, we've been able to enjoy our pontoon boat, being able to launch it. And we haven't been able to do that starting about eight years ago. The water levels had dropped so much that it was, even though we have a long dock, we couldn't get our powerboat off. Unless I really strained and strained and strained. So I ultimately got rid of my punt, my powerboat, and I bought a pontoon boat. I'm about 200 feet out of dock, and I know there's people that have much, much more than that. And last summer, I was beginning to have trouble getting my pontoon boat off of my hoist. This is the first time that we've had this problem. Eight years ago, we didn't have the problem. Years ago, the water came up against my stone breaker wall. Now I've got 20 feet of beach in front of it. And I just wonder what happened with the dam in that period of time? It caused that degradation? Was it control on somebody's part, going down and putting some boards in, taking some boards out in a timely manner, so that lake could be controlled? Was this a political issue that some people on the lake wanted low water? Some people want, you know, refined with a high water, that had relatively high water that had previously been there? No matter who I talked to, I keep on getting different answers, vastly different answers. I'm not sure if this is political or what it is, but it just doesn't smell right. My experience is something doesn't smell right, it's not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Morning. Please state your name.
Larry Madury with Lion Township. So I just wanted to address a couple of concerns that I have regarding the special assessment. So one of the things that I do in my other career is, in terms of problem solving, is trying to understand what is the problem that we're trying to solve right now. This is the part that I'm struggling with because we have laws in place on legal lake levels. We should have had some corrective preventative maintenance plan for the dam. And somewhere along the lines, there must have been some catastrophic failure that brings us now to the point where we're at, creating a special assessment district. That's the part that I would like to have more understanding of. And as, as a supervisor in Lion Township, our constituents are looking for answers, right? I don't have an opinion one way or another whether the assessment is needed or not. All I'm looking for is the first stage of any, anytime you're trying to do problem solving, is understanding what failed before you go to that next step. And that's the part that I would really like to get more answers on before we move in that. So delegating authority to the attorney and the engineering is, I would assume is part of that whole process. But before we get there, I would like to have at least that discussion and have the township more involved in understanding how the, not only the process works, but why is it that we've gotten to this point, so that we can really help educate our residents in terms of what needs to be done, and why it needs to be done? And if we don't do it, what's going to happen? Right now, all I hear is, or at least at this point, I see that we're creating this assessment, and you know, whether we're replacing the dam or repairing the dam, or putting funds together, I agree with that. We should do that. What was done historically is going to come into question. What was done historically to make repairs or replacements of pieces of the dam, or accountability for who's in control of the lake level, and when does that happen, and do officials know, are notified when that does happen? So that there is accountability and transparency to all residents. So my ask is that we, right now, kind of halt this delegate, you know, delegating the authority until we can get some of these questions answered. And then I think once we get to that point, then if that deems necessary, at least on the Higgins Lake side, then yeah, then maybe it makes sense to move to a special assessment. But right now, I don't, from what I've seen, I don't see that. Okay, so anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Fred Swinehart. As I said on Wednesday, I'm a member of the foundation, Conservancy and HLPOA. I'm particularly aware of the resources that we have around the lake, that care about the lake and the proper control of the level and all that. I would remind everyone that we have a website, and it shows basically everything from the USGS gauge on the lake level. And one of our members has got to summarize that in the graph that's on our website. The track of the level today is, I believe Jody is, and keep an eye on that too. It's moving up very well to the summer legal level, and it's not entirely clear to me that we have a huge problem beyond perhaps some maintenance. I suspect there's some maintenance, but from what I can tell, a personal observation and what seems to be going on now, we're not talking about a replacement of dam. We're talking about some probably relatively minor maintenance. And I am strongly opposed to doing anything with a special assessment district until we actually know what corrective action will cost. And my feeling is, we very likely can handle that ourselves without putting any burden on the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. I'll get to you.
Hi, my name is Rick Rourke, and I just wanted to ask you guys, or girls, to be cognizant of the fact that we're already looking down the barrel of a $300 million special assessment district for a sewer, with, with, we don't really know the cost yet. And now I have another special assessment. You guys are contemplating to put another burden on us. I would like you to please keep that in consideration, that this is the second special assessment district I've fallen into, and you know, you guys are going to price me out of here. I just want you to be cognizant of all the other special assessments that are going on around Higgins Lake.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Alexander. I live on the east side. Our family's been there since 1925. So, so on the west side, they have one problem with a lake level is too low, they can't get their boats out. But if it's too high, it's just my shoreline is just decimated. I don't, right up to the bank. So that's just an aside, but I do want to, I concur with everyone else that I would hope that you could delay any action until we get more information. Don't need a second assessment right now. I was wondering, a couple of things, if, how long the people of Houghton Lake are paying for their assessment? Is there a term on, on, is it in perpetuity, or is it just a limited term? And, and my other question is, couldn't, as someone had mentioned on Wednesday, couldn't we, instead of doing an assessment, once we know the cost to repair or replace the dam, couldn't we then contribute that way as opposed to an assessment? Are there answers to either of those questions available about Houghton Lake, how long their assessment?
Oh, we don't allow the response.
Oh, no? Okay. All right. So then, that's, those are my concerns right now. And thank you for.
Thank you. Eric? Or not, Eric? Andy? Go ahead. Greg?
Oh, yes, thank you. I'm Greg C. Mack, and I'm a Garrish Township president, and thank you again for allowing me to speak. I'm a property owner at Higgins Lake, and my home is included in the proposed special assessment district. I'm deeply concerned about the potential creation of a special assessment district for a myriad of reasons. The first is the subject of costs. It is my understanding that this special assessment district is being considered with the pretext of using the money for repair and maintenance of the Higgins Lake Dam. This is being put forward as though necessary to establish largely because of the maintenance currently necessary at the Houghton Lake Dam, and this suggests in that someday, a similar special assessment district might be necessary at Higgins Lake, so it should be done now. I'm hard pressed to think of a less serious reason to spend thousands of unnecessary dollars. It's also my understanding that the board believes that there's very little that the Higgins Lake Dam now needs in the area of maintenance to be able to operate properly for water control purposes this summer. This fact has been repeated many times in the recent Roscommon County Board meetings. With these things in mind, I'd like to suggest that any further implementation of Part 307 of the special assessment district be suspended for the following reasons. The thought that thousands of dollars needs to be spent at this juncture to set up a special assessment district to fund the minor repairs that might currently be necessary is outrageous and a potentially huge embarrassment. The thought that this board would create a financial burden for Higgins Lake residents that would exist in perpetuity and likely consist of more costs and legal fees to create the special assessment district than in operational fees to repair the dam should make everyone think twice. This entire project was the product of a decision by a previous board, conducting their final meeting together, and with little more instruction than to let an attorney figure it out. This previous board is now unaccountable for the operation, costs, and negative public sentiment of this program. I believe that this entire plan of action is of a scope such that the current board should want to do their own research to establish its validity, rather than continue to move forward with a legacy project that they inherited. Further, this board has already seen evidence that they have unreliable legal counsel. The attorney advising the board, Stacy Hassan, has been making misleading statements consistently throughout her presentations. Statements that repeatedly suggest expanding her role and seeking expensive and unnecessary actions are being advised deceitfully. She has implied that she has spoken with both the Lion Township Supervisor and the Garrish Township Supervisor, and that they are on board with her project. This is not true and is a very significant misstatement. She said that no dam repair can be done without numerous expensive lake studies, some requiring legal management in order to obtain a permit. This is not true. She said in her presentation to the board on March 22nd that she guaranteed that you could not get a permit to repair the dam at Houghton Lake without changing the lake level in the circuit court. She emphatically guaranteed this. This is not true. She implied that the survey she wanted to have sent to residents of the Higgins Lake area would gather their input. This was a misstatement, as the survey was nothing more than an attempt to update database information. There was no option for input. This is not even a survey by definition would assuredly provide a minimal response rate and be of great expense gaining no relevant knowledge. No less than former Circuit Court Judge Michael Baumgartner stated to this board on Wednesday that you have been misled. There is no longer any reason to trust any statements that Ms. Hassan makes to this board. Many people have suggested that the board start over. I believe that the choice of legal counsel needs to be part of that process. I suggest that this board immediately remove Ms. Hassan and find another firm to represent the interests of Roscommon County. This board speaks often of the desire for transparency. With that in mind, I would like to see a motion and public board discussion on this action as soon as is practicable. And that's all I have to say, but thank you for listening.
Thank you. Nobody else? Anybody else for public comment? Supervisor?
Yes, this is Dave Ute, Garrish Township. I, I'm not going to, my comments will be very short today because they've already been highlighted by previous speakers. Just a couple of things. When you're talking about transparency, I, I think it would be best for the board, for your board to table this, moving forward with this process, and wait until, until our residents aren't back yet in Garrish and Lion Township. They're, they're still not back. They're still, they don't come back until the end of May. So if you, if you want to have a good public participation, you should at least wait until the last weekend in June, when we can reserve the high school auditorium, get four, 500 people in there, and you can have, they can have their question and answer in front of the Roscommon County Commission at that time. Many of the, I would, I would estimate that well more than half of the residents don't even know what's going on here. And so if, to, to, for the previous board, at their last board meeting in December, to pass a motion that you now will have to deal with is totally, it's, 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 it's preposterous for them to do that. I believe that the repairs to the dam will, will be significantly less than the attorney's bills that you will get from Attorney Hassan in order for her to set up the special assessment district, which I also feel is not necessary, and a burden on, on the residents of, of our townships when they, when, when most of them that are within the district still don't know or understand what's going on. I, I, I am not in favor of you moving forward with this. I've never been in favor of this, moving, moving forward with this. And I would respectfully request that you stop this process with a motion to suspension. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Pete Anderson. My family's been on the lake for 65 years here. And I always thought the, while, number one, we just got back from Florida, and all of a sudden, there's this special assessment being considered, sort of blindsided me. I thought I was, I thought I was keeping in touch with what was happening in the county, and this, all of a sudden, this came up. I didn't even know whether there was a problem with our dam. I thought there may be, there was problems with managing water levels, but the dam, I've never heard anybody say there was a need for repair. And all of a sudden, set up a special assessment district seems like overkill. If there are some damages or repairs needed for the dam, why can't that be addressed other ways rather than a tax that'll last forever? There's got to be other ways of managing that dam. It's not that big a dam. I mean, what is it, two foot high, two, three? I don't know. And to put all this money in a special assessment, it was needed, I'd be willing to pay. I don't even think it's needed, because I've never heard anybody scream that the dam's going to fail. And like I say, it's only, like I say, two, three foot high. So I think this was just over, overboard as far as considering this, this special assessment district. It sounds to me like we were included in setting up special assessment districts because Houghton Lake and Lake St. Helen have dams that need some repair. Ours, as far as I know, is in pretty good shape. So unless you can tell me different, I'm not for it. I, I think it could be handled. If there are repairs needed, I think there's more efficient ways of handling repairs and, and taking care of the lake. And as far as the lake level, last autumn, I talked to people on the north end of the lake, saying that the lake was so low, they had to take out their boats because they were on, on the bottom. Who's controlling it? I don't know. Are you, are everybody controlling it, or just an individual? I mean, it shouldn't be that hard to control the level of the lake as far as I can see. That's my comments.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Thank you. Tom Cochran, Higgins Lake front lake owner. My family's been up here very, very long time. I can remember the days when we had a corrugated steel wall. That was the dam for the lake. We went in with the log, the wood process. Now we have the gate. I don't know where the problem existed, where it is. I knew, I do know that Houghton Lake had a failure. And I came back from Florida last year, and I remember seeing they had to put a steel plate in front of their dam. We kept our dam open, I believe, to feed their lake. It brought it up 18 inches. Within a couple of weeks, they were down two feet to start. I understand that. We didn't get the rain, we didn't get the precipitation. Higgins stayed low, and we never recovered last year. I'm like one of the other folks. I couldn't barely get my boats out at the end of the season. And I do know other front owners took their boats out early because of the, they were worried about it going even further in the drought. So there was people that didn't get to use the lake at that point in time. I don't know where the problem exists. I just know the lake level needs to be addressed and brought back up to the standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Andy? Okay. Higgins Lake control structure. This goes off your sheet, Rex. Yes, you started off from what you came up with.
What we're going to discuss is a tentative plan of action, how to manage the lake levels and control structures on all three lakes, Higgins, Houghton, and St. Helen. And in this tentative plan of action has been drafted, and you know, it needs to be gone over with all five board members for input. And this, this is how we are to proceed in our end goal of the whole project.
Dave, yours, your mic is off, Dave.
Does the public have this?
I just, all I made copies was for his board members.
Well, it's important that the public has.
I agree.
It's just, it's just the right thing to do.
All of. I might add, this is nothing we're making a motion on today. This is strictly a discussion.
Oh, no, no, I understand, Mr. Wilson. I just think it's important that the public have the same information that we're privy to. It's just only fair. Again, it was no oversight on your part. Just, it's just a correction that we need to make.
We'll wait until they. We have 12 points on this plan of action. Ongoing action, special assessment district development of all three lakes. Point two, during this special assessment district developments, delegated authority search will be, and hire should start. In other words, someone to take over operation and maintenance of the dams. During the special assessment district development, temporary fixes that may be needed on any of the lakes before the special assessment districts are completed, board will request modifications with Eagle in writing and request permit changes. Number four, as a special assessment district is formed, the new delegated authority will take over operation, maintenance, and oversight of any construction of the lake level control structures. Number five, financial administrative oversight of the lake level control structures is to be performed by the county controller administrator, and monthly report to the commissioners on progress. Number six, oversight of delegated authority and controller will be retained by the county commissioners. Number seven, operation and maintenance plan shall be drafted for each lake with, by the DA with input, DA meaning delegated authority, with input from the Board of Commissioners, Eagle, and the VNR. Number eight, Houghton Lake, the special assessment district is completed, so the delegated authority should be hired immediately to take over operations on that. Number nine, engineers shall be hired after the special assessment districts are brought into line and work with the DA, the delegated authority to implement new legal level control structures. Number 10, board will hire engineering firm and recommendations we sought with input from the delegated, new delegated authority. Number 11, implement engineering firms' recommendations with Eagle input. Number 12, the end goal of this plan is to shift responsibility of the lake level control structures to the new delegated authority for ongoing operation and maintenance. of the lake level control structures to the new delegated authority for ongoing operation and maintenance. And to have the delegated authority form a board with Roscommon Commissioners, representatives from each respective Special Assessment District for input on the maintenance and operation of such.
Thank you, Rex. Eric, while we're talking about delegated authorities, you said you had something you wanted to bring up?
It was more on, along the lines of Jody's not here right now because she's handling, I'd like to talk about the current lake level situation as of yesterday. So she gets back. But in the meantime, I can, I, I have very, very short public comments about our current attorney and what's going on.
Well, let's keep it to the delegated authorities right now because that's what we're discussing.
Over this later because I did mention that that is gonna be on the agenda. So whenever you want to do that, allow me to do that.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Let's just take two minute recess since Jody comes back.
Great, thanks.
Since everybody has it, let's resume our meeting. You were talking about the delegated authority, Eric.
Oh, yeah. I wanted to, I wanted first talk about the current lake level situation as of yesterday and, and offer an opinion on Higgins Lake. Higgins Lake is currently one point two inches over the legal level. Holton Lake is eight point seven six inches over its legal level and Lake St. Helen is ten point five six inches over its legal level. One of the things I think we need to do in the future and what I mentioned the other day was we need to manage the Higgins and Holton watershed as, as a unit. And right now, all three gates are down on Higgins and it's dropping. I would, I, I would like to offer a suggestion to our delegated authority that, and of course, she moves our direction anyway, but that the gates now be put back up as traditionally are done this time of year when ice is out. And that will stop sending more water down to Holton Lake, which is already very, very high. In fact, Judge Baumgartner the other day was extremely upset about the water going down there. So that'll send less water down to Holton. So I'd like to offer that suggestion.
Thank you.
On that copy, does the court order say April fifteenth or ice out?
Ice is out.
Ice is out when that happened?
Yes.
At my end it is.
So.
Thank you. This is our discussion.
Fifteenth, that lake level does not change.
Well, then tomorrow we can do that.
Good.
What I will ask of the Board of Commissioners, since the delegated authority works under the direction of the Board of Commissioners, and you are well aware that there is a Court of Appeals decision concerning Higgins Lake that specifically states that that is a static number not to be deviated from, i.e. you can't go up and you can't go down. That is the definition of deviate. And static means stay the same. If you would like intentional banking of water, I would like a motion by this board, please.
Thank you, Jody.
I saw a move.
This, today is in discussion. We're not making any motions.
Oh, okay.
Any faults, we can legally.
As of the fourteenth, the gate should, that, that's my position, the gate should go up. Because that court order coming back from the Court of Appeals also applies to Holton Lake. And Holton Lake is substantially higher. So we need to manage it the best we can to, to give both lakes in compliance. And eight point seven six inches versus one point two inches, I think, is quite a substantial variance. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna bring Stacy up here for Special Assessment Attorney Engineer Duties and Responsibilities. And we, we have a video too.
Yes. We have a PowerPoint for a portion of the discussion.
Thank you. Morning.
So there's been a variety of topics brought up this morning, specifically, Mr. Chair, what would you like us to speak to? Okay, would you like, so we can, in terms of the options for Higgins Lake or the Special Assessment District or exactly what? Okay. All right. As you, as you are aware, the board made resolutions to establish Special Assessment Districts for all three of your established lake levels. And why was that? Oh, yeah, it is on. So a, as this board is aware, there was, you, you have three established lake levels and you know that there is no Special Assessment District. Now, now that we have one for Holton Lake, but there was not previous. Since the Midland Dam break, there has been great effort to educate all Michiganders about dam safety and about Part 307 specifically, which is the inland lake level act. The Michigan Association of Counties has made efforts to educate its membership about Part 307 and held educational workshops on this at previous conference. As a result of that conference, I was asked to speak and ultimately retained by this board to assist with the process of setting up the Special Assessment Districts. As you are aware, the county has jurisdiction because a lake level was established, and that's before any of our time for each of these lakes. You have jurisdiction over the lake levels. That means you have the responsibility and you also have, as a county, the liability associated with these lake levels. If there is no Special Assessment District, then funds come from the County General Fund. And so that is, that is something that I think when you're looking as a county commissioner, you need to be cognizant of. If costs need to be expended and you want to assess them and there is no district, you have to wait until the district gets assessed to, or in the process of being assessed to levy those costs to the Special Assessment District. And that becomes problematic when you want to get something done or something happens that you don't expect, but you don't have your district assessed. That could be something that is required as a result of litigation that takes place on the water control structure. There could be a catastrophic event that requires.
I'm making, I'm making notes. I'm making notes. Dave, I think we've gone through that in the emails. I'm allowed to do that legally and I'm gonna continue to do that. I'm sorry. Do you object?
All right. So as an example, if there is a catastrophic event and something happens or to a lake level structure and it needs immediate, immediate repair, then depending on the situation, and I can't think of every situation, but there may come a time, if you don't have a district set up, then it becomes much more difficult or time lapse would have to happen in order to get the district set up in order to assess it. It may end up being county funds that are therefore responsible for that. And again, just the continuing inspections, maintenance and operation of the existing structures that you already have are county fund responsibility, our county general fund responsibility rather than a special assessment responsibility. So those are reasons that most counties have Special Assessment Districts. And if they don't, as a result of the education from the Michigan Association of County, the Michigan Association of County Drain Commissioners, et cetera, that this is happening. Many, many, many other counties have Special Assessment Districts for their lake levels. Mount Moransee, all your surrounding counties, Moransee County, Ogama County, Clare County just went and updated over a dozen of theirs. I think they have seventeen lake levels they've updated or confirmed. And each of theirs, Mount Moransee County has more than a dozen. I could give you countless examples. Oakland County has over forty. They have Special Assessment Districts for each. Counties who didn't have districts before have been in the process as a result of this educational movement since the Midland Dam breaks of making them or updating them. As an example, Kent County is going through the process in twenty twenty-three of establishing and confirming six different lake levels this summer, lake level districts. They already have the lake levels. The districts weren't confirmed. I think they have hearings in May and June for six. They had a couple last year that they're going through that process. As I mentioned, Clare County in recent years, Calhoun County has went through this process. In the last decade or so, or so, St. Joseph County, as an example, has went through this process. This is not unique to Roscommon County. And county boards have chose to do this for many reasons, liability reasons, et cetera. And so this is not in the counties that I mentioned as an example, Kent County. It is not in contemplation of a project. It is there. So when a project comes up, this process is already in place. So districts act as a safety net, even if there is no project, because this takes time before you can do the project in some situations if you don't have it. And so that's why many, many counties have chosen to do this. We are going through that process with Lake County associated with a project right now, as in. So the county board, so that does not mean there is an assessment or there's an equal assessment or there's an assessment every year. That means there is an assessment district in place if the county chooses to utilize it. Any assessment on a part of 307 in the county has to be approved by the County Board of Commissioners. So if it arises that you have costs, the county board can choose to pay for it out of its county general funds and not assess if it wishes. If there is arrangements with a property owners association or something else that's going to pay some of the costs, that arrangement can be made if you wish. But most counties have chose to have that safety net of a Special Assessment District in place and not wait until an emergency takes place or it is a holdup. It is up to you as to whether you want to move forward now or ever on, on all of your lakes. We already have a boundary confirmed for Holton Lake. That does not mean that you have to use it. That is your decision. So with regard to a special, the Special Assessment Districts themselves, as to why would the board want one, I guess before we unpack something else, does the board have any questions of, of me or of Spicer Group as to why you would want one? And again, I'm not recommending why you'd want one and why you would do that outside of a project or pending significant expenditure. Yes? So if there was no special. It happened. There's no money in our general fund to cover it, then what happens? So I'm gonna give you a very rare likely. Depends. So it, it could be a situation where not, you don't fix it because the county doesn't have enough money or the fix has to wait until the lake level proceedings go through to confirm and establish the lake level. And so setting the boundaries is only one step. Then you have to go through the methodology and hold the hearings as to actual assessments. And that takes a period of time to be accurate. And so it's very fact dependent. But it could be, if you don't have the district set up and it needs to be immediate, it doesn't happen immediately. The county borrows from some other fund or figures out a way from its county general fund to pay for it. Or it waits or works to find some way to get through that process so that assessments could be left.
Will we allow to ask questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Our LLC is a very, very small, it's lake level control structure. It's not a dam.
Yes.
Last year, the dam was inspected and supposedly in good working order. I found some things wrong with it. There simply some rocks were taken out of the dam by the Commissioners back in two thousand fourteen. So that's a pretty easy issue to address. Eagle is willing to work with us on that and get that accomplished. If, as many of the speakers have mentioned, Higgins Lake Land Conservancy, Higgins Lake Property Owners Association, were all to get the dam up to specs, I don't see the need for, for a Special Assessment District just in case. Because if anything catastrophic happened to this dam, very little would happen downstream, very little. Until, until it could be repaired.
So in my experience, like other counties have set up lake level Special Assessment Districts for as much as a culvert underneath a road for liability reasons. And so I have also seen situations where if a dam becomes in disrepair and fails and goes downstream, there may be liability from the impact to the natural resources and inaction by the Attorney General's Office for an impact to natural resources. Depending on the situation, and I am not an engineer to speak to specifics of Higgins Lake, Higgins Lake, and I can't hypothetically come up with every situation. That is up to the county as to the risk that the county would like to undertake or not undertake as to whether what could happen and what could be the end result or potential liabilities of that. All I can tell you is that there are potential liabilities and other counties have chosen to take this step to protect themselves and the residents of the, and the county budget for those reasons. In terms of, I think, I think that pretty much covers it, what the cost. Okay, so the other part is if you have property owners associations or other groups that provide funds, that is amazing. That should be welcome. And that, that means that there, even if you have a district set up, you might not have to utilize those funds. But that is most likely for a specific circumstance and districts are set up for perpetuity and some also unforeseen circumstances. So that is, that is a liability choice that this board can make. And I'm just providing you information. The inspections are paid for by county general funds. I mean, those are the decisions you want, you need to make as to how, how this community is paying for the, the day-to-day operations, but then those potential unknowns. And if there's a huge significant storm event like Midland County experiences, every, every piece of infrastructure in your county is impacted all at one time, not just one. And so there, there's a money ask all at one time from something like that, not just from one source. So.
Part of the problem I have and a lot of the problems my constituents have is they don't know what the cost is. I think we need to slow this process down, find out, hey, what is it gonna cost each individual property owner? Is it gonna be fifty dollars a year, five hundred dollars a year, ten dollars a year? Those are the things that have gone unanswered and why people are so alarmed about this whole situation. It's in my district and Dave's district, Higgins Lake is. And so the, those are some of the questions all of our constituents have. And that's one of the reasons. Additionally, there's litigation right now. We're in the middle of litigation that hasn't been resolved. A lot of this can be resolved with that litigation. And if we have people that are willing to build the dam, a, a new one, right now, there's no problem about building a, a new one. But if we have that ability, we should be able to do it as private citizens as opposed to getting the government involved and spending hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially on lawyers fees to set up a Special Assessment District. Because it does cost a lot of money to set up a Special Assessment District that is going to be borne by the taxpayers.
And, and I don't know that there was a question, but the only comment I will make to that is it was decided before my time, before all of your time, that the government was involved because this county has jurisdiction over that structure under Part 307. You know, there's other topics. If, I just wanted to make sure before, before we left that one, that we move to the next one.
It just, I, my big concern, I hear this phone calls and emails. Number one thing is, I, I maybe that's not a fair question to ask, but I think that's what people want. I want to know. What is, what is, what are we looking for? I think that's a fair question.
So costs relating to projects?
Give me your, your best answer.
Okay. So Spicer Group and my firm have done this, been retained by counties through, throughout the state and is very lake specific. It's also specific, and this question came up, Commissioner, last night during.
Was there, I was on, I was on you.
As to, as to the, you know, how complex, let's start with the district. In terms of a district, it is a circuit court action. And so there's publications and mailings to everyone in the proposed district. So the mailing cost for a lake with twenty-five people is different than the mailing. So the mailing cost for a lake with twenty five people is different than the mailing cost for a lake with seventy seven hundred people. So there's that. And then also um there's going through the court hearings and preparing the information for the court hearings. So for the district cost itself, it is more than anything else the amount of property owner communication and transparency and interplay between the property owners, the townships and the county in terms of the cost than anything else. Because that's what takes time to respond. And we are happy to, but that takes time. So in a county where the plats are pretty straightforward and um we send out an FAQ and the mailing and there is no webinar, there is no request for information through a survey. There is no going to the township meetings. That cost can be, you know, I think we've done some of these for under ten thousand dollars. Um in a situation where there is um from the public and the county board and the local units of government, a request for greater communication and involvement where webinars and meetings in front of the county board and township meetings together, information is required and the complexity of road ends, plats, different things like that. Then those costs are much more significant. So it is a matter of how many meetings it takes to ensure accuracy and to ensure that your property owners have and the board has a good understanding of the process in order to move forward. And so it all that comes into play more than anything else. The actual day in court i- is is, you know, a ten thousand dollar action perhaps in a situation like this. It's all the um coordination with the assessors um to get that type of information, et cetera, which increase the costs to ensure that everyone feels heard and is heard. Um in terms of um the lake level projects itself, as you can imagine, that is very different on a lake to lake situation. And what the actual costs of the projects were are, and I'll have Luke speak to that and what permitting requirements are and the complexities of the resources in that situation. And as you all are aware and Commissioner Ostergren has mentioned to this, you have a unique watershed here where one lake impacts another. Have a downstream water course from Higgins Lake that is impacted by what this lake does. That is more complicated than in other lake situations. And so it may require in order for the DNR and Eagle and the court to have a comfort level in approving things and and you um as commissioners making decisions for your constituents. It may require more engineering information than in other lakes to have a comfort level with that decision. And so that becomes much more expensive than in a lake that is not connected to all those other natural resources in the manner that your lakes that you have the privilege of having in in Roscommon County. Um Luke, do you want to add anything to that?
Um yeah, I mean, just a, and I guess I should introduce myself. Um my name is Luke O'Brien. I'm an engineer with Spicer Group. Um so just to elaborate a little bit on what Stacy said, um the current natural resources that that you folks have here in Roscommon County with with Higgins and Houghton Lake. Um it is a complex watershed. And and that's, it it's a good thing, but it's also sometimes makes it difficult. Um and and one of those difficulties with the complexities of the watershed is is maintaining the lake levels. Uh it it makes it more complicated. And so you have Higgins Lake that drains into the Cut River and then makes its way down to Houghton Lake. Uh and then Houghton Lake goes to the Reesburg Dam. Um and so all of those play into structures and and how you can maintain those those water levels. Um and so when you're looking at doing uh going through this process and it's it's a process, you know, special assessment district is just the very first part. Have to work your way through the steps and and if you want a full picture of what your options are and the things that you can do, you really have to focus on each one. And in this case, since it is complicated, it requires additional coordination. Um and and the fact that, you know, Higgins goes into the Cut River, you know, if if Higgins outlet it into uh you know, just a drainage ditch or something, that makes it much, much simpler. The fact that it goes in the Cut River and and Eagle and the DNR value it highly. That requires additional coordination and and conversations to make sure that, because you know, if you do modifications to the structure or or what have you, you have to get a permit and you're going to have to get them to buy in to what you're doing. And so there's complexities with this scenario that we don't necessarily see on every single structure.
That's an excellent point and something that I'm concerned with and my constituents are concerned with. And that is, we've all agreed here that we're not going to attempt to change the legal level. You've mentioned that you're not going to attempt to do anything to change the legal level. But once the SAD is developed, funding or that SAD could be uh Eagle could, I'm sorry, I got that wrong. Eagle could come in and say, hey, we want that legal level to be lowered three inches. Then the funding from everybody here that doesn't want the legal level changed would be used against the very people that want it to remain where it is. That's my concern and uh and that's another reason I feel we need to wait until the current litigation is over before we move forward with an SAD. There's nothing wrong with a dam right now. It's not going to fall, it's not going to fall apart in a in a year or two. I don't know how long it's going to take us to go through the local court to get things resolved. But it it's a big concern that my constituents have that that's what's going to happen. Eagle's going to step in and say, hey, we want that legal legal level lowered and you yourself said that while the citizens and we have input, they have a lot of control over what's going on with the legal level.
So so commissioner, in in that scenario, absent any action to change the lake level, if DNR, as you say, that hypothetical situation they come in and say to do this, if there is no district and that is required to be done, then the county general fund pays those costs and not the special assessment. And that is a decision for this county board to make?
So what you would be doing is spreading the costs out over the in the general fund rather than that. That's exactly my their concern. They're the ones that are on the lake that would be paying the very attorneys that they would be fighting against.
No, I I guess I misunderstood your hypothetical situation. My my understanding of what you said, Commissioner, was that out of the blue, not because we're trying to change the lake level, there's no action to do that. That out of the blue, E- Eagle or DNR comes in and says the county needs to take an action. I I'm not involved in that. Eagle does that. We're not retained at that point. Let's say you say Spicer, Fahey Schultz, please go home. And we're going to leave things uh the the way they are is what I understood your situation to be. And then Eagle comes in and says, county, you must do this. If there is no district, then that's then that's a county general fund expense is
That's my point exactly. That's exactly.
To do that. I mean, that is just what happened. It's not, you're not paying the lawyers who are doing this. We we are not involved in that decision under that.
That's exactly my point. We need to wait until the current litigation is over before we even talk about an SAD.
Commissioner, were were you suggesting that Eagle would request to change the legal lake level?
They may. They may. We got to wait until the current litigation is over to find out what what the negotiations are going to be and everything. In other words, you're throwing something on right now by adding an SAD on Higgins. It is premature. It's premature. We need to put it off for a while. Yes.
And the the soon as we walk out of this room, people are going to walk up to me and go, Mark, what is the cost? Now, I know this is a difficult answer and it's a, it's a, it's a guess. There must be some kind of area that we're looking is a hundred dollars a year for each tax assessment or
Let me answer that one. Thank you, Commissioner, because I I think you're trying to get into the minds of your constituents and the questions. So so each lake, the total cost is going to be different because you're dealing with three different lake levels. Um the cost, regardless of what the total project cost is is going to be something that under the Lake Level Act with a special assessment district. The act was recently revised to have a forty year time period to allow you to levy special assessments for a project. And I testified in front of the Senate advocating that position so that there was more opportunity to make it more affordable to residents. I have yet to see anybody, maybe four lakes will use that much. Um but most projects that we have been involved in don't get to that level regardless of the size of the overhaul of the dam. And so what I have seen, regardless of the size of the project, and this is just for a project that at the end, after bids are taken and we know the project cost and assessment methodology is concerned uh put together and we can talk about that. And then we work with your financial advisor um which I think is Bezinski and Company and your bond counsel, which I believe is Dickinson Wright. And we look at um with the county board, what is affordable to residents in terms of an annual cost? And then, and I'm doing this in a number of other counties that that we speak that we have improvement projects that we're doing. Um in Lake County, as an example, I'm working with their county administrator and he's like, no more than this per resident per year. You figure out a way to make it happen. And so then we look at how many years we spread that out to ensure that that is the case. That's for a project.
And let me just add something. So the the spreading it up to forty years, that's an option.
Right.
That doesn't mean if you go and and you do a project, you're automatically going to have a forty years. I think I just want to make that very clear.
Yeah, some are five years. It depends on, because as you go out, it's more interest, you know, you're paying more interest over time, just like a a house mortgage. So if it's a, if the project cost is low and you have, you know, like in Houghton Lake, seventy seven hundred um residents and the DNR paying a large portion of it. And you can say, oh, for a hundred dollars a year for a front lotter and X number of dollars a year for a back lotter, we can get this done in ten years. Then it's a ten year assessment. It just depends on that situation. If it's, if it's um a lake that has less residents and the higher cost, then it might have to go out to fifteen years as an example. That is for a project. If there is no pro- and and so if there is no big project and it's annually, you've paid for your improvement project. And we have to think of this long term. Um okay, your tenure, let's say hypothetically, please, no one put it's a ten year assessment on Houghton Lake. Let's hypothetically. No one write that in their notes that that's what it is, please. And then you're done. And then normally there's a contingency in that in case there's problems with um the contractor. If there's none, then you're going to have some money left over from that ten year bond for your continuing operation cost for a while. And then there would be no assessment after that ten year period at all. Once the contingency is used up, let's say we you have a lake manager or somebody doing that, you have a contract for five thousand dollars and you need a engineering inspection as required by Eagle, that's three thousand dollars. And you have some other bills that are, you know, seven thousand dollars. That's, you know, let's say it's twenty thousand dollars. Then that's the amount that gets assessed and maybe it's, you know, fifteen dollars a piece or whatever a piece to those people that year. The next year, you don't have an assessment or inspection because it's only three years. So then it's less. So then it's less the next year. Maybe you have enough money left over and it's none that year. So after your bond is paid off for your big project, then it's just the cost of that operation inspection each year. And it's going to vary depending on did I have to pay for a new stop log? Did I have to pay for that? Very different each year. Um in terms of the setting up of this special assessment district and the costs related to I was mentioning to Commissioner Censor that due process costs money. Um but that's it's an important and constitutional right. So it's an important and um I think well spent cost. Once you get through that, you don't have to do, you don't have to confirm a new district again. That's done for the next hundred years. Unfortunately, that didn't happen before. So you're the unlucky board that gets to deal with going through that process because it hasn't happened before. So I guess the answer is there's going to be a set cost, but you work with your financial advisor and bond counsel to determine what's affordable and how many years. And then after that project is paid off, then it's just your annual ongoing operation.
And I guess I I say this because, you know, if if it's the price of a small pizza, most people in this room would walk out the door. It's the price of a small car, then they're going to be more concerned. I anticipate that there's going to be a little of both with that with that variances. I'm not sure because I need to have some analogy to know before I make my decision. So I can make a rational decision based on cost.
Right.
I am in a curse because a lot of stuff been brought up. We have a lot of lot of public input, but I cost is is obviously a big concern.
Right. So I would say that after your improve, your capital improvement projects are done, whatever they are or if they are then the regular, once you get through this tough stuff, then you're talking very nominal, less than a, I would, I would assume less than a hundred that dollars a year if that assessments, once we get through this swath of improvements that you may choose to do.
You're talking about the general operation. It it's going to be, you know, it's up to the board what they want to do with the structures.
For the capital improvement.
For the capital improvement project. And then that is going to dictate how much the cost is going to be for the operations and maintenance.
And I want him to explain that more because there's, right now, you're on a manual operations and maintenance versus a automated. And so can you go into that a little bit?
So you know, potentially, so let's, you know, right now, all three of your structures are a hundred percent manual operation. So someone has to observe the water elevations and then go out to the site manually razor, lower the gates, add or remove stop logs, that sort of thing. So it takes time for someone to go out there. Um so there's costs associated with that. If you go through major improvements, there's new technology that allows you to automate a lot of it. If not, you know, nearly all of it, you're still going to have to go out there and check on the dam, make sure it's it, everything's okay. Um but if it's automated, you can change the razor, lower the gates or, you know, whatever you end up with on the structure by with a click of a button. And so if if that is how you progress, then your operations cost would likely go lower.
With your permission, Mr. Chair? Yeah, I mean, when was our, when was Houghton Lake? The Houghton Lake level, when was Houghton Lake dam built in eighteen twenty eight?
I believe Houghton Lake was built in the nineteen thirties.
Eight thirties?
Yeah, so it was approaching like
Ninety years old.
Yeah.
And obviously with new technology, it's it's, everyone in this room would understand that technology is going to be needed to continue to to continue lake level. We need, we need automation.
Yeah, so each of the three structures are are considerably, they're they're old. There's no doubt about it. And and if you think about it in terms of a car.
Sure.
You can drive a car forever if you want to. But as it gets older, you get hundreds of thousands of miles on it. The number of repairs you need to do are going to increase. And if you own the car for thirty years, well, the technology from when you bought it brand new to when you're driving it when it's thirty years old is going to be substantially different. And the, you know, the efficiencies and things like that with your car, your your gas mileage may go down or or there's new cars that get three times the gas mileage that that your car, your old car does. And so there's, you know, the the structures have served their purpose and and to follow up with uh Commissioner's comment about the dams aren't in danger of failure, you're correct. The the reports have not indicated that they're in danger of failure. Now, in St. Helens is is probably the in the worst uh condition. But they're not, you know, going to fail tomorrow.
And and I appreciate your comment because the the bottom line is, is I honestly believe when I walk out this room today, people at least maybe have some idea financially how much it's going to cost. Because I think what I get from everybody that talks to me, including my own family is like, how much is it going to cost? At least we walk out today with some idea.
So how that process works is who's in and who's out. We did that with Houghton Lake. The next steps are, you know, obviously seeking grant money, seeking other funds of money, designing a project, bidding the project. My crystal ball isn't going very well for, I had um um lake level in Kalamazoo County, um just take bids um this month and it was double the estimate. I mean, it just depends. So after that I mean, it just depends. So after that takes place, then we're going to look at the methodology um, of the, and, and I will get to your question. If you want to, my muscles get sore after a while. I promise I will get to you. Um.
He'd make a good senator. He's a good filibuster.
I, I, I think it's great questions and so I want to make sure. And so uh, everybody who's in and who's out does not pay equal. Um, we had a lot of questions la- last night about DNR has state parks. You're blessed with state parks in your area. In the projects that we have worked on, um, and, and others that Spicer wasn't involved, state parks get assessed at multiitudes, multiple, multipliers higher than regular properties because of their frontage, because of their public access, um, et cetera, because of their campsites. Yes. And so, um, you know, it is not unusual. I've had projects where their assessments are in the six figures. Um, and so that they are, they are, they, it can be assessed for that. We will go through that process. Um, campgrounds may pay a higher assessment, uh, commercial properties or hotels may pay a higher assessment. It depends on the situation, um, and marinas, docks, et cetera. So there's a process. Who's in and who's out is the first step and that's why this takes a while. And then the process of determining the methodology as to how to break up the cost. And so then you have a cost and you have who's in and who's out, and then you have to do that and it's not equal that way either. So everyone is not going to be similarly situated. Front lots pay different than back lots. Um, there most likely will be a frontage component. Why? Because the DNR has a lot of frontage, so there most likely will be a frontage component. Um, a public access component will be most likely involved. Why? Because DNR has public access. But we haven't, we have to get through the step one first. And so I think, I'm hoping the board is hearing now that this is a multi-step process to get to an actual levying of an assessment. I, I can't see, I don't anticipate or can't imagine that there will be any assessments in twenty twenty-three regardless of the board and there may not even be depending on for all three lakes, I highly doubt it, but most likely not because of this process we have to go through, maybe not even in twenty twenty-four. All right, mister.
Okay. I do.
You wanted to add something first?
I just want to add, can I just add one thing? Um, in terms of the existing structures and you go through this whole process, um, there's been a lot of talk about repairs to the structures. And certainly Holton Lake has what I would consider some significant issues, St. Helen as well. Um, but in terms of major capital improvements, a lot of the focus, if you get to that point, is going to be in terms of improvements and modifications. And I, and I just wanted to stress that.
Question I have, and it's something that Commissioner uh, uh, Wilson and I have had for quite a while. We've never received and we don't even know who authorized current, what have you currently billed on Higgins Lake? What has Spicer currently billed? What is the current marketing department? What did they build us so far up to this point in time? Or Higgins Lake? So we can get some kind of idea of what the bills are ongoing. We, we've asked for them and we have never received them yet. Uh.
I was not, um.
Your law firm bills, your law fir-, I, I know, I know.
But I did not bring that information. I believe, um, your controller can get you that information, but I do not have that with me today.
Right. Well, I know last month it was eleven thousand dollars. Your firm, just your firm was eleven thousand dollars. So there, there goes the ten thousand dollars.
For Higgins Lake?
Yes, for Higgins Lake alone.
So apparently you do have that information in front of you. So you might be in a better position today than for me to answer. I did not bring.
So I'm also wondering what Spicer has charged and I'm also wondering what the marketing firm is charged. These ongoing bills are of concern to us. Uh, when I don't believe, and a lot of my constituents don't believe that they need to happen in the first place because we'll take care of it. We need to wait, put this off. The dam is only fifteen years old. It was, it was redone in two thousand and seven. Okay. And we can wait a year or two or whatever until the current litigation is over to get uh, uh, to come up with an SAD. I don't think that'll hurt anything at all.
I don't have a video. I, I had a PowerPoint with some similar information from what was prepared.
No, no, I think it's what we played in the webinar last night, but on Higgins Lake alone, I think it.
It's strictly related to Higgins Lake. Um, so.
If the board wants.
Board chooses to have us go through it, we can. If, if not, that's.
We did.
Is that available to us by the way? Or is that going to be available on the?
Absolutely.
On which website is it on?
Absolutely. Um, I think it's on the website that we sent out the mailing to everyone.
The Ross Common Lake Webinar.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
And I believe the Holton Lake webinar that we did similarly is also on there. Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All, all three control structures and the, how, how are we going to move forward with this?
Um, Stacy?
Yeah.
I have a meeting in a couple of weeks with St. Helen Lake Association.
Yes.
And they want to know the status we're at on that.
Yes. So, um, we are in the process of obtaining the information with regard to who has lake access and who does not, the same process that we went through with Higgins Lake. And so I think we're to the point where, I don't, were we doing a survey for this one? Okay, I think we're to the point where, um, we're close to being able to move forward with a petition to circuit court. We anticipate that this.
Do we have a map of the?
We have a, a tentative district, but we haven't shared it yet to this point. We've been coordinating with the assessors to gather the information and, and determine who.
Do we know approximately when that'll be ready?
Um, we are working on it. So the assessor for, I think, all Higgins Lake and, uh, Lake St. Helen is Julie Tatro. And she said, please let me get through my boards of review in March and then I will get you information and, and I, I don't know if she's around, but she has been exceedingly knowledgeable and helpful and responsive on behalf of each of the townships that she works for. And so, um, I want to make sure that she is acknowledged for her, her hard work and providing us excellent information. And so we are waiting for some information, um, more to come in and then we will have a proposal and then it is up to in coordination with the delegated authority. And again, do you want a webinar? Do you want uh, us to come to the township board meetings right now? That one, maybe it's not as a uh, big of a need to. We, we are clearly able to do that before we go to court, but there is a cost that's incurred in order to do that each time, or do we just move straightforward to court? And those are the things that I think we're working through with your delegated authority. And so any direction as to do you want us to go to the townships first? Do you want us to have a webinar? Do you want us to have a mailing and survey about who is in and who's out, um, before we go? Um, in terms of, is my understanding that this board does not necessarily want to move forward with a revision to the lake level, but I would recommend that when we go to court, um, that we add seasonal variations or variation language into the order. Um, because as, as the commissioner mentioned, there, it is not at that level today. And that is the other thing I think is important to mention. Um, there was some discussion about if your, if your lake level is not at the, like established lake level and permitting. And I think it's an appropriate time to talk about that too. It may end up that revising the order to include seasonal variations may allow for a permit. It, it may not without a revision to the lake level order. That's more along the design that you want to see. I don't know yet and I want to explain that more. I know you had a meeting, Commissioner Wolfson, and I commend you for how above and beyond you go for your constituents and gathering information about this process with Eagle. And I had made statements that you have to have in order to get a permit. There has to be some consistency, um, with the lake level order. You were told perhaps that that is not accurate. I went to the head of the dam safety unit and I said, you know, and, and Jody was present at that meeting. This is what Mr. Wolfson has been told. And he said, well, that's not what he was told, not that you misrepresented what you were told, but that what you were told is, is not necessarily correct and not all staff people understand the interplay between part three oh seven and part three oh one. So when you look at part three oh one, there is a definition of an ordinary high watermark. And when you go into part three oh one and you read that definition, it talks about it is a certain level on a stream or on a lake, or if there is an established lake level, then it is, has to do with that established lake level. And so when you're reviewing a permit under part three oh one to perform improvements like will be necessary for Lake St. Helen, that is going to be evaluated. And if they are not, if the lake level, which by law is the ordinary high watermark, then they, then it might require a revision of your lake level or a revision of your design to be more consistent with that definition. And so that's why, um, we had discussions at length about do we need to kind of figure that out before we, because you don't want to have, it's more expensive to go to court twice than once, but you may have to do that. Is just a inclusion and very, like level variation going to be enough to get the permit in that specific situation, same with Holton Lake? Or are we going to need to change the design and maybe, and maybe not have what people are used to, or do we need to change the lake level? And so I don't believe it's completely clear on Holton Lake or I, I think it's clear that variations need to be included in order to meet the requirements of part three oh one with that definition of ordinary high watermark. Or if it's so different that the variations won't be enough and we have to actually have a revision to the lake level order to meet those permitting needs. It gets extremely complex from a regulatory standpoint. Um, Spicer Group, not Luke, and I had a project in Moncom County where they would not give a permit for the same lake level that had been there for decades and decades because it was, did not meet that criteria. And so the lake level needed to be revised in order to get the permit to have the lake level, have the water where it was historically at. Um, your county controller attended the meeting with the assistant attorney general and Luke Trumbull from the dam safety unit. And so did Luke and I, I'm hoping I'm conveying this information consistent with what the discussions were. That you're understanding as well.
And that's exactly what I'm concerned with because the lake level control structure on Higgins has been mismanaged. Lake level control structure on Holton Lake has been mismanaged. Lake control structure on Lake St. Helen's been, has been mismanaged. They've been mismanaged high on Lake St. Helen and Holton Lake, and they've been mismanaged low on Higgins. That's exactly what I'm concerned with on establishing this SAD here on Higgins Lake at this point in time before the litigation i- that is currently before the courts is completed. Because Eagle can come in and say, hey, we, you know, this isn't going to work. Uh, it's been this low for years. There's no way we can get it this high. Or it's been this high for this many years and we, and we can't get it this low.
The special assessment district is a separate issue from obtaining a permit to do work. And it's, they're completely separate things. The establishment of a district can be in preparation for a project or it can be a safety net or for use for ongoing operations or for payment of a professional to manage your lakes more consistently.
Who would pay? Who would pay the attorney's fees for that?
The attorney's fees for what, sir?
I- if they did not like what Eagle came up with and or the recommendations of a differently, a lake level, who would end up paying for that? It would, would it be the county or would it be the people in the special assessment district?
So let's use.
Once the special assessment district's established, who would pay?
So sir, in re- in response as an example of, we know we need to do improvements to Lake St. Helen and Holton Lake. We don't know what is going to happen, if anything, with Higgins Lake, but we know we need those. And so with regard to, let's just, let's just use Holton Lake as an example. Um, we go through this process. We don't change the lake level of what we had. Um, we don't go to court at all yet. And I would, I would, I guess, recommend we don't go back to court to even add the variations until we get farther along in the permitting process to see what Eagle is going to say. Because it's not about, it's not about going back to court for that. It's, are you going to get a permit to build your lake level control structure or not? Regardless of what the court order says and, and that will be dictated by Eagle. Or will it have to actually change the lake level order or will it just adding variations suffice? We don't, I don't believe we know the answer to that yet.
Oh.
No. So that's, I'm going to finish answering this. Okay. Just real quickly. And so if in order, so we don't have, we can stop court today. I mean, we don't have to go any farther in terms of adding variations or the revising the order in Holton Lake today, but you might, it might impair your ability to get, I, I think it most likely will impair your ability to get a permit to do the project that needs to be done on Holton Lake. So they kind of go hand in hand. We need to see what is permissible, given that we're today ten inches over. Um, the reason, and in addition to that, there was initial discussions about asking residents what they want, et cetera. The reasoning for that was you're about to rebuild a lake level structure. And let's say we add in variations, we don't change the lake level. And then, and then you've spent significant sums on an improvement. And then you decide, let's see if we actually want to change it and get it to where residents want. You've already built your structure. It might not be able to be managed in a way that it would allow what, what you find out the community actually wants.
The structure can be built to accommodate that.
Exactly. And so that's why I think there were the initial discussions before we, before we build this thing. Let's make sure we're building it the way we want it for the next fifty years for its design. And, and if the board does not want to, that is not, you're going to need to do, it's anticipated. I don't want to say any guarantees because it is anticipated that in order to get the permit, there will be a significant amount of information that Eagle and the DNR is going to require to get the permit for Holton Lake in the first place. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And so while we're doing that, resident input we, we thought was something that would be important to get so that you're setting it, you're setting it in a way that meets the residents' needs, that meets the Eagles' needs, and you're building a structure that goes for both for the next fifty years. So that was initially, if the, if we can wait to do that part and see um, and maybe variation's enough and we don't ask the residents what you want in terms of a, a, a change or anything at all. And we can see if we can get a permit just with a variation change, but that variation language is going to require a circuit.
Hey. Let me ask this a different way. Okay. We got Holton Lake. Holton Lake has a special assessment district that has been developed. Eagle comes and says, like you say, we can't maintain that level. It isn't going to work. Okay. And it has to go back.
In response.
Can you let me, let me, please let me finish. Okay. Okay. Oh, and Eagle comes in and says about the Holton Lake Special Assessment District, that isn't going to work. We can't continue it at the established legal level. It has to change. Who pays the attorney's fees to, uh, fight that? Who pays? Special Assessment District, General Fund?
I guess I don't.
Exactly my point.
The board decides.
Or the board decides.
The board decides who pays for it? Okay, whether, so all of Ross Common County would pay against, against the, right, against the established legal level on Holton Lake. Just talking about, because.
I think the board decides any, any of.
The board would decide who pays.
No special assessment is levied without the board's approval.
That's right. That's bottom line. Okay.
That's right. And some, something you brought up, uh, earlier today, ma'am. I like to walk out of a meeting and know that we've accomplished something. And this has been a very informative meeting, but something you mentioned a few minutes ago, and I think it like, it needs to be addressed. You mentioned as far as future meetings. This is, this is just my, my, my guess. I would like to see, obviously with direction from the board, county controller, and even the public input during their special time, is that I'd like to see the three areas, maybe Holton Lake, uh, someplace in Higgins Lake and someplace in St. Helen for, for a meeting, so the public can attend. Time, timeframe and time at your leisure, whatever Jody would come up with with chairman. One more webinar and one more opportunity to come back in front of the board of commissioners. And respect to my, my, my commissioner to the right, it is a regular meeting, not a special meeting. Uh, of course, we'll probably have to take a break for lunch.
Yeah.
But again, that's just my thoughts. I'm off, I'm open to any, any, uh, I'm off, I'm open to any, any uh additions or suggestions from my fellow commissioners and or the public after when they get their opportunity, but that's my thought. Three one one. So thank you, ma'am.
Early, do you have anything? One second, let me hit other.
Um, so we're looking at a couple of months before court, doing down St. Helen, probably.
Look, so so I'm gonna say we need direction through from you through your delegated authority. I think if you tell me, and I think I heard from Mr. Commissioner Milburn that you want this. For Lake St. Helen, do you want a webinar? Do you want us to do a mailing for every property owner to submit information about their access? Do you want to attend us to attend in person their township meetings before we file the complaint? If you do, it will be a couple of months yet. If you say this one's pretty straightforward in terms of the district and the variations, then we can do that sooner. If, then I'm gonna do another if. If and and if we do that, we will want to do the variations in there at the same time. If you want to wait, and and I guess I recommend doing the district and the variations at the same time. And then later, after the district is set up, we hear from the engineers through Eagle as a condition of the permit to make some revisions. If that's necessary, then we'll go back to court a second time, but hopefully we won't have to. Um, so I think your delegated authority will probably ask, we're gonna ask your delegated authority, do you want a webinar? Do you want us to attend township meetings? Do you want us to do the mailing with the survey? And then we will do what she tells us to do and we'll move as quickly as possible in either way. We can probably have the petition ready next month to file with the court if you don't want all those things.
But we have to work with the court bucket, so
Yes, we would file the petition and then
Two to three months.
Yes.
I guess, yeah, I I hope I'm not overstepping my bounds, Mr. Chair, into the delegated authority. Involvement in citizen, I want transparency and citizen involvement.
One other question.
Yes.
When the state of Michigan is assessed in these districts, does Michigan pay the bill or does it not?
Okay, the question is that when the state of Michigan is assessed, does the state of Michigan pay the bill? And so we would assess D N R. And D N R pays that assessment through funds appropriated in the D N R budget. Which pot of money depends on how that property was um obtained to the state of Michigan however long ago.
Is it assessed at the same mileage?
No.
The question is, do they make the payment?
Yes.
It is made.
Yes.
They don't totally ignore us.
No.
Okay, just ask, are they assessed at the same mileage and you said no?
I don't understand. I guess I don't understand.
There's a and the value of the state land. Okay.
So
How, how, you know, if they're assessed, is it ten dollars, you know, in comparison to other properties?
So you were on the webinar last night where we had a slide that said assess lake level assessments are not based on S E V. And then earlier today, I said it is based on footage, front versus back, public access, campsite, a number of different things that haven't been evaluated yet. We get through this first process of who's in and who's out. Um, but I can tell you it is not based on the S E V of any parcel. Because the S E Vs change every year and then your assessment rule would change every year. And it's not based, benefit is not based on the S E V of the parcel.
It's a percentage. I I'm just kind of curious as a percentage. Because I've I've got a lot of questions from a lot of people on the state parks and and the land. What amount in comparison to the regular property owners does the government pay?
But we haven't
Well, they're big, well, I know they're bigger, but that's why I'm saying it.
So we not, we have not evaluated that because we don't even know the boundaries for Higgins Lake, for Holton Lake. Once we get through a project cost, then we're gonna go through, okay, we have seventy-five, seventy-seven hundred parcels. And then we're gonna send out more questionnaires, marinas, campsites, public access, um, you know, commercial properties. There's a lot of different parts and pieces that go into that almost more complex than setting the boundaries themselves to determine the barest cost.
And these are, these are the exact questions that Mark brought up. This is what needs to be explained. It needs to be explained to the public more and more.
Go ahead, Mark.
This is not meant as an admonishment. Just a gentle reminder to the commissioners, all questions go through the chair. Thank you. Oh, okay, and not meant as a much, just good, good, good procedures.
Yes.
Um, apportionment tables will be set up on each district, is that correct?
Yes, um, excellent question. And so that kind of goes to what Commissioner Milburn was speaking of is methodology. And we tend to have a webinar about when the time comes. There's, there's only so much information. I could spend a week long retreat on this process and what is gonna be for the public. And so we're trying to take it in steps. And we have a slide that says there's different steps. When we get to the methodology part, we will have these same township meetings, webinar, mailings, et cetera, explaining that process. But you are absolutely right, there will be an apportionment of who's in and who's out and then a breakdown of those costs. After that is done and the delegated authority will hold a public hearing where all resident, not in court, where all residents um that are proposed to be assessed have the opportunity to come and object. Then this board approves the cost and the role. That's why I said no special assessments are levied without the approval of this board. This board approves the role.
So once the apportionment is set up, that continues through this um through all time?
Okay.
Just like in a district when when the apportionment schedule is set up.
So, so it could be the apportionment Great question. And so when there's a bond issue, that bond issue, if it's ten years, the the bank that buys it is basing it on a specific role, so that role can't change for that bond issue. So for if it's a, if it's a five-year bond, that doesn't, the world can't change for that payment. After that, we know there's gonna be splits. We know there's gonna be combinations. You know, there could be a new park, there could be a new campground. And then this board can decide, let's reevaluate this assessment rule and redo it and hold a public hearing for that. It normally in other counties does not take place each year and update because there's due process of mailings, publications, public hearings. And oftentimes, the updating of the role costs more than the operations that year. And so, but it happens every, every several years when, okay, it's time to update the role that would take place. So it is not, once this board approves a rule for like that five-year project, that rule can look different ongoing. Great question. Thank you.
It's pretty common that the role doesn't get updated unless there's a a significant expense that needs to be
Or a significant development on the lake.
Yeah.
We had a lake where, you know, a condo development and it was a um, you know, an undeveloped piece of forest and now there's three hundred condo units on it that did the role.
You have to.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Question uh that I'd like Trolle Valentino to answer, she could, in some kind of a ballpark. Do you have any kind of ballpark idea of what we spent so far on Higgins and legal fees? The marketing and Spicer engineering within five grand? Do you have any idea? You, I know you stroke the checks for it.
Um, just a couple of points to that. Um, the first thing that I will tell you is the Board of Commissioners does have a Claims and Accounts Committee that receives monthly reports that list every single bill that comes through the processing. Um, and we do have two commissioners that are appointed to that committee that receive that listing. Um, so that information has been provided to that committee on behalf of. Um, I do believe it was Wednesday that I was asked to provide information on the totalities deal. Um, that is the first time a member of this board has asked for that from me. That being said, I already have him placed an Excel spreadsheet that I have been tracking all of the billings. Because if the board were to so choose um to charge back to the special assessment, we'll need to be able to pull those in for proof. Um, additionally, if so choose to be different like that, you'll need that information as well. So to date, um, including a bill that actually is just going in for payment for the special assessment district for Higgins Lake, forty-three thousand eight seventy oh eight. And I do want to clarify that the bill was not for Fahey Schultz for eleven thousand. That was actually Spicer Group's billing and that was January, February, March. Um, Holton Lake, because I think this one is, this one is basically completed at this point. Um, without any further information going towards uh looking at the one point five million lake study, so on and so forth. Uh, that is at one eighty-eight, two thirty-two, seventy-seven. Um, kind of a quick, quick idea for people. Um, did you say there were seventy-seven hundred parcels in Holton Lake?
Oh, it's, it's around five thousand.
Okay, so essentially if you took one eighty-eight thousand and divided it by five, that would be your cost. Um, I haven't done that, but I'm guessing it's less than a hundred dollars a parcel not spread out. Again, the Board of Commissioners has not determined that that would be something assessed to them. Uh, Lake St. Helen, because I know that Commissioner Rexson, you are Wolfson, you have been concerned with that. Current to date, and obviously we have not scheduled any mailings or publications, is at twenty-two thousand nine ninety-five.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And who originally authorized that? Was it the chairman that authorized those expenditures?
And you, you're on Claims and Accounts.
I was not on it at that time.
Uh, from this, from January, you have been.
I've never received any of those reports. I'm sorry.
Uh, yes.
The other day for the report, maybe I did.
Yeah, we do Claims and Account every month. You haven't been coming in to doing them or calling for them.
If I've received the reports, there's never been anything specifically line items like that. There's, there's no line item, I guess. That's why I was asking for the line items.
I do believe that Mr. Commissioner Wolfson did ask that I provide that at the end of every month at the last meeting, which is the chair did ask me to do that for you guys, so more than happy to do that.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, not, it's, it's for Jody. So Jody, I did the math for Holton Lake. It's thirty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents.
All right, and thank you for your time. Um, I I agree with Commissioner Milburn. It is, it is not without cost to provide property owner information, but I think it's well spent. Um, because lakes are precious to your residents. And so they want to know what's going on. And hopefully at your next meeting, you direct the delegated authority to have us move forward in the manner you you discussed for Lake St. Helen. And we will be pleased to schedule those meetings um in anticipation of the special assessment district for, because that is still something that we have been asked to do until the board tells us otherwise. For Higgins Lake, we have made um uh outreach either through the delegated authority or through Spicer Group or Fahey Schultz to each of the townships. And if this board wishes, I can give you the litany of phone calls, emails, and direct communications to either the township supervisor and or the assessor and or the clerk that have been made in an attempt to set township meetings to discuss this issue with each of the three townships, including the one in Crawford County for Higgins Lake. I have a breakdown of that and I have a list of copies of each of these emails to show that we have been communicating or attempting to communicate. Um, when you send an email, I say communicating. Um, I guess it has to be received to have a two-way communication or responded to um with regard to um each of those three townships.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Okay. You have public comment? Go ahead, Herb. Come on up here. State your name, please.
One of the questions that the lawyer answered right off the beginning was that you needed the S A D because of some catastrophic event that might happen. And I don't know if everybody has seen the dam, but if you envision something where the water falls like Niagara Falls, that's not the case at all. The dam is wide open right now and the water flows through there in a straight line. There's no fall, which tells me that the river is taking all the water it can handle. Well, if you destroyed the dam right now, I don't think there'd be much difference in the flow whatsoever out of the lake. Number one. Second thing, all of you ask questions about the cost. And all I saw is we went around and around the bush, okay? It no figures were ever mentioned until Eric brought up her costs, which she professed not to know anything about, which are eleven thousand three hundred and eighty for one month. There's twelve months in a year and I anticipate that every month we're gonna be getting another bill like that. The concern a lot of us have about this S A D, and it is sad, that once it's formed, anything that can be related to the dam or the lake level, bingo, we get the tax on the S A D. That's our problem. Because we lose complete control once that S A D is formed. That's what we're worried about.
Mr. Chair? Yes, I didn't, I I had about a two-sentence statement that I wanted to make and and I didn't realize that I and I asked to make that earlier.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Uh, I just want to say the township supervisors are against this. Everyone I've heard from in emails and in person are against this. The only person that I heard uh that was not against this and moving forward with the S A D was my opponent in the last election, Tim O'Rourke, when he spoke here the other day. And I hope everybody remembers that in the next election. Okay, we need to know more about the costs. We're involved about, we need to move before we move forward. The cost of the repair of our L L C S before we move forward with an S A D. Higgins is nothing like Lake St. Helen. It's nothing like Holton, and we should wait until the current litigation is over because we don't know what that is going to resolve. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Yes, sir.
I'll make this short if I can. Fred Swinehart. I've introduced myself before. I had a great deal of difficulty as an engineer and as someone who is very familiar, as many of the people around here are, with the technical nature of Higgins Lake. Spring Fed Lake, relatively small inputs from anything except on groundwater. Uh, the lake has been studied extensively by highly reputable scientists involving horror of engineers and everybody you could imagine, hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent understanding the lake scientifically. Most of these reports are on our website, h l p o a dot org under the water level discussion. And one thing that is very clear to me as an engineer is these two people know absolutely nothing about the history of research and and understanding of Higgins Lake. And let's not make a big fuss about that point. I don't argue their credentials as legal people. But I sure as hell do as a greater of the paper's school. They haven't done their homework. And I respectfully suggest that they do that. They get on our website, they take a little time and study what is already known. They also ought to take a little time and look at this dam at Higgins Lake. It probably goes no farther than from that door to that door. It's only about that high. Catastrophic failure is not going to be an issue. Finally, the other thing is about the definition of who is in the S A D. It's right now, as I understand it, the riparian owners around Higgins Lake. We have a million visitors a year from all over the state of Michigan. It's the cornerstone of the economics for the whole northwest or northeast corner of the county. And, you know, one blithe number that was tossed out here, it's all maybe a hundred bucks a parcel. Right now, there are about seventeen hundred, fourteen hundred, depending on how you define that population. You multiply it out, just take two thousand for a nice number and a hundred dollars for a nice number. That's two hundred thousand dollars a year that will plunk into somebody's pocket. We don't need that. My, my reaction to Mark's question is, or Eric's, how much money should this board approve for further study on Higgins Lake? He answers zero, none. And I guess that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'd like to speak if I could.
Well, I'm severely disappointed in
Well, I'm severely disappointed in most of the board or whoever decided to have the law firm do this and come here and have us, um, subjected to, um, potential further meetings or, uh, no more information. You got no information. Okay, you, your questions were not answered. You know, it was be around the bush, be around the bush. And it's really, uh, I can imagine what our cost just for today is to have the attorney and her, and the engineer and her two interns come and talk to us about this. I think that's an absolute shame. Uh, they were gaslighting us and telling us that, oh, well, we could have this automated and an automated dam. Do we really need an automated dam? An automated dam spells potential for breakdown as opposed to sticking like three boards in? What's the cost associated with maintaining the level of Higgins Lake? And to a degree, Holton Lake? I can't, I can't see any answers. I can't see any answers for making a dam that's worked about a hundred years changed to make it automated when the regulation of the lake level is so doggone simple. And I think that we're being used. The attorneys, um, by setting up, um, an SAD or the attorneys by doing this, it's a stream of future revenues for that law firm. Nothing more, nothing less. For them to use anecdotal, uh, or a lake in Kalamazoo or something that has no relation to our lake, you know, for them to use anecdotal evidence or arguments is specious at best. We have a couple of engineers that have talked this morning that have talked about this. This is not the Niagara Falls Dam or anything that even approaches this. This is a simple structure. It's very easy to, to regulate. I don't think that we should go off and spend money uh, which actually winds up being spent by the citizens of the entire county to do something like this. So, I hope you get an answer somewhere along the line because you didn't this morning.
Yes, sir.
My name is Gary Shower. We own over on, uh, the west side of Higgins Lake. But I'd kind of like to, if I can get an answer, is, is the delegated authority a separate head count of the SAD?
We can't answer. You can't.
Stacy, can you answer that?
No. It is, it's public comment, sir.
Is the delegated authority of the SAD over Holton Lake a separate dedicated employee? Or is it someone that is shared with county activities? Because, can I get an answer on that?
Can't.
No, we can't.
Let's assume that it is because, because what I've seen over my life is a government just metastasizes. Right now, Jody is the delegated authority and I'm assuming that then we'll have a separate head count. What'll happen by the county is they'll start allocating all the expenses that they can smell or see that they can allocate to this uh, Special Assessment District. Delegated authority, if it's a separate head count, you're now going to have some allocations for office space, HR, uh, and for the salary and benefits. So we're looking at right out of the gate, probably a couple hundred thousand dollars by debt by, I don't know how many people are on Higgins Lake. You say two thousand for, well, that's just. Yeah. And the other thought is, if I understood Stacy right, and she can certainly correct me, is she wrote, she made some comment about we might be able to get money from grants. Who's going to be the grant writer, Jody? Do you know?
Joe, we can't answer questions.
Yes, you can. You can because who writes the grants right now for the county? That person will probably then write the grants for the, uh, Special Assessment District and then allocate some of their salary, fringe benefits and overhead over to the SAD. Okay? I'll, I'll guarantee that. Um, and then I also heard, what I thought I heard Stacy say at the very beginning was that if we didn't have an SAD, it'd be the general fund that would absorb some of the expenses of the dam. Is that correct, Stacy? Did she say that, Dave?
No, she can't answer.
No, no.
Oh, I.
Testament. Let's assume that she did. Wouldn't that provide more of a sharing on all the people that have the opportunity to use the Higgins Lake versus just screwing all the people that are lakefront owners? Dave?
I re- explain. It's not question and answer time. It's public comment.
So you can't comment?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Tim.
Well. Good afternoon, everybody. The, uh, a couple of points. I am the only one that came at the last meeting and spoke towards approval of the SAD. You already have direction and have given direction to your attorneys, your engineers. Move forward with SADs on the three lakes. You can also, you always rescind whatever you want to rescind. You're, you're aboard. You, you act by your motions. You've, you've created the SAD for the most part on Holton Lake. Uh, you now know what the roughly the cost of doing that business was. You're near halfway probably on Lake St. Helen. I've heard from people on St. Helen that have already been received questionnaires about whether they have access or not. And that's really what the big process is, is creating the SAD is saying you're in or you're out and, and what creates that is you have access and what kind of access do you have? The big picture that nobody really wants to talk about too much is on Higgins Lake. You have multiple areas where uh, the public access is through the townships, through the state of Michigan. Uh, there are launch sites. There's, there's all kinds of access, different kinds of access for front lot, back lot users. And that's the difficulty of coming up with a number that, uh, you know, everybody sits here saying, I want the number, I want the number and I want the number too. You know, I'm a taxpayer. I want the number. I'm involved in, in objecting to another SAD for a hundred and thirty million dollar sewer system around Higgins Lake. Uh, and the arbitrariness of how the original SAD was created there. Uh, we wanted the number with a hundred and thirty million dollars. Now we wanted to know how was that going to be divided up? How many people were in? How many people were out? Um, who was going to gain from that sewer? Uh, you know, was it going to be more gain for a person that, uh, has sixteen bedrooms? And the other person that's on a cabin that's a mile away from the lake that has one bedroom? Uh, so yes, I do implore the board to continue on the mission of creating the three SADs. You are about uh, you know, a heartbeat away from having a huge expense dumped in your lap. And I'm sure the people down on Wits, Witsom Lake would have loved to have had an SAD set up so that they could work immediately when that dam failed. And then that dam, the earthen part of that dam failed, not the dam itself. So you can look at the dams all you want and say whether they're in good or bad structures. But if there are earthen dams on both sides of that structure, that's where the failure will come and it will easily come with a big rainstorm. Uh, people that have said here, listen, the dam's this tall. If it falls apart tomorrow, it's really not going to have a big effect. As the road commission manager, we had a private dam in the southeast corner of the county in Esther Township, which was just a thirty-six inch tube that some owner had put in and they built an earthen dam and they created a small pond that four or five people, one, and Rex probably knows about this. But they, they wanted to create a small pond for their enjoyment for four or five people. And it worked for a lot of years. And then a huge drain came and it failed. The earthen part failed. It blew out that dam. It hit our road, F ninety-seven, and damn near took it out, which would have been a huge thing for the people that live anywhere around that. That's their only access to the city. It also blew out like a half a dozen smaller culvert and roads in an adjacent county. So when you say that this dam is, you know, it's not going to go anywhere. It's in good shape. I believe all that. I believe that Spicer Group has told you that over and over again. Mr. Ostrichon would like to, to not listen to everything that he has said up until the last few weeks. Which is, oh my goodness, oh my goodness, we've got to change this dam. We have to close off. Hell, he went out and took a board and closed it off. Illegally closed off a part of that dam that has to remain only by the permit. He violated the permit that this county has for that control structure. He did that all on his own without any support from this board or approval from this board. He just went out and closed it off. And then when he closed it off, he realized that there were some rocks underneath that he thought should be there that weren't there. He still wanted to go out there and do things to that dam. If you, if he hadn't been admonished right from the beginning, he would be out there today, I'm sure, putting rocks in that dam. Now, years ago, somebody, and I can't remember who it was, said that, you know, let's just, uh, maybe we don't even need the dam. Well, what happens when that dam is gone is a useless issue. Removal of that dam. It's not going to cause any problems, though. It can, it can be removed tomorrow.
Thank you. During other public comment.
Yes, I have something I'd love to add. Is that okay? Can I go ahead?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I'm still Greg C Mac and I'm a Garrish Township resident. Uh, I have a few things I'd like to address and, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to start by saying how refreshing it was to hear Commissioner Wolfson say in an earlier meeting that he had himself taken the initiative to talk directly with Eagle about permitting. Given the importance of what we are undertaking here for the lakes in Roscommon County, I want to suggest that this body assign commissioners the critical jobs necessary to answer the questions important to a plan of action of this scope. I believe that a commissioner should be determining what costs are on the horizon for the dams at all three lakes. I believe that a commissioner should have the responsibility to determine what permits might be required and how to obtain them in order to proceed with repairs necessary for the dams. I believe that a commissioner should determine who legal counsel should be in matters of this magnitude. And I believe that a commissioner should determine what the extent of repair and maintenance might be for each of the dams. Currently, it seems many of these jobs are the responsibility of Jody Valentino. I don't think it's fair to her and I would think you would want to determine things of this importance for yourself. I'd like to suggest that the board have a public discussion now and appoint commissioners to these important tasks. Since you spoke earlier of needing to find a candidate for delegated authority, I would like to suggest the board consider current county employee, Mr. Chase Shepke, for the position of delegated authority. He has a degree from Western Michigan in geophysics, a master's in geoscience and a master's certificate in applied hydrology. Mr. Shepke worked for four years as a construction engineer and geologist for Prehn and Newhoff of Cadillac and Grand Rapids and currently has his own consulting business in these areas. Lastly, Attorney Hisong again demonstrated her tendency for giving poor advice. She stressed today that a special assessment district needs to be set up at Higgins Lake in order to prepare for the type of event that has never occurred in the recorded history of Higgins Lake. And that even if such were to occur, the problem would be of minor significance to both Higgins and Holton Lake. The Higgins Lake Dam is not at all in the position to create the problem that occurred at Stanford Lake. Also, I want to point out that earlier today, Attorney Hisong admitted that her discretionary direction, that at her discretionary direction, a mailing webinar and associated things were done at a cost over the normal yearly maintenance of the Higgins Lake Dam. I don't believe this was ever overseen or authorized by the board except possibly by not objecting to the suggestion and having no certainty that it would be done. This is why I believe attorney management is a big concern. During Attorney Hisong's long-worded explanation of the understanding that Commissioner Wolfson had with Eagle about permitting, she made many hypothetical references that may not likely be applicable to permitting for our particular situations in Roscommon County. It was suggested earlier in public comment that the board should go forward to create special assessment districts and that you could rescind this at any time. I suggest that now is the time to rescind any order for activity to create a special assessment district at Higgins Lake. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Thank you. A German? Oh, Wolf's, I'm sorry.
Sam Benoyan, Jr., Line Township resident. Your research, when you term in your decision, should be based solely on facts. Reason why I'm saying that? Tim O'Rourke mentioned about the sewer project going around Higgins Lake. And we've shown time and time again that their so-called facts were not real. But we provide facts. Now, that's a special assessment. Five-figure money that could be assessed to those within that sewer district. Now, the question there is, for instance, is there a real sewer? Here, like, is this a real problem? Maybe you should look at this as a pilot program instead of what you're doing to see about getting support from the public. The difference between the project that we, that has been proposed to us by the sewer is that there's the law that says that they can initiate putting a sewer around Higgins Lake. The law also allows the public to get involved and have not only their voices heard, but a petition drive accordingly, as you probably know what's going on there. We don't have that here, to my understanding. So the special assessment means you all can just do whatever you feel you think might be worthy of initiating because of concerns. Now, for those up in the audience and here who's lived here for a long, long time, all of a sudden is the dam at Higgins Lake a problem that warrants all of this? That's number one. So I question, where are you getting all the facts? If people have a voice on this only, you obviously apparently have the deciding factor on that. On the sewer side, we had not only a voice, but we can do something about it by getting a petition and so forth and so on. So I think that's the hangup that some of us like myself have. So getting all the facts is what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Make motion.
Uh. German?
So move, make a motion. Second?
All in favor? Aye.